Good morning. Okay. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It's November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. We are here in the GPW conference room. And is that Dan Kylie?
It appears, it appears to be.
Okay, you're, you're in shadow, so I didn't.
Oh, I'll give you some light.
Okay. So, planning board members present from my left.
Lynda Jones.
Kate Plumlee Stewart.
I'm David Frack.
Silver Mayor.
Brad Rich.
Tim James.
Kurt Kline.
And Dan is joined by Zoom.
Dan Kylie.
And our alternates.
Jim Bond.
And.
Whitney Banker.
And our staff people.
Rob Taylor.
And. And we have a couple of guests. Have you signed in? Okay, we have three guests, I'm sorry. I consider Celia, I consider Celia fixture because she attends almost all of our meetings lately. Okay, so first we have public comments. And that would be anybody who would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. Nope, okay. Next, we have review and approve the minutes of October twenty-sixth. I think most of us just got them.
Does it have an email?
Not emailed? Maybe like an hour or two ago, yeah.
Oh, yeah, correct.
Should we do these some other time?
Yes.
It's up to you guys.
Sure.
We've got what, fourteen pages of, I don't know why the text looks small.
Well, you're talking about, I might die for time, so.
People, do you want to do these minutes tonight or put it off for next time?
How is that when you do them another?
I believe we tabled the minutes till next meeting.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of tabling the minutes till our next meeting indicate by saying aye. Opposed abstentions?
Dan's an aye.
Aye, I'm an aye.
Okay, we will table the minutes and take some time to read them. And we'll deal with them at our next meeting. Next is our select board report. Kate, what news do you bring?
We met on Monday and took a look at a public space rental presentation, just talking about different residential spaces that could be rented in town for private use instead of just hoping that you might get a reservation. They'd still be a public space, but you would be renting, say, if you were doing Lakeside Park, the pavilion itself. So just looking at some ideas surrounding that and how to schedule it. So that was the first path and we'll be seeing it again. We authorized a lease to First Light Fiverr, who has been occupying a space here in DPW without paying anything for the lease and without paying any electricity, so that's changing. We authorized the expenditure of ARPA funds to purchase a new ambulance to get that going because ambulances are somewhere in the neighborhood of two years out. It was approved at town meetings, so just getting that going. We awarded the two town properties that went, two of the town properties that went out to bid to new owners. And so I believe those transfers are in process. And then the third property, which was a mobile home in a park that did not get any bids, and so it's going to be turned over to the park and it's going to wash for all of us unfortunately, but you, it's, that's, that was a challenging one and at least it will stop not incurring. And well, will stop incurring taxes that are never going to get paid. We discussed the deputy town clerk and assistant town clerk in that the Secretary of State had a different opinion on who could sign up on documents that they weren't a resident, had some suggestions. So for now, we have appointed a deputy and assistant deputy town clerk and an assistant town clerk to make sure we have coverage at all times so that Wendy is able to take vacation and we'll be pursuing some legislative action. If you are familiar, all the town clerks, it's a little archaic and there are a lot of rules and you can't just throw anyone in to, to do those tasks, so. Just kind of some housekeeping there and we accepted some money for Lakeside Park. And other than that, and did you get to notify committee members?
I wrote a piece yesterday and asked her too, but I don't know if it.
Well, so, and I will just say that we did, after coming out of non-public, appoint members to take a look at the Johnston Drive Beach parcel together. So those people getting notified if they haven't been. It was a pretty competitive listing. We got a lot of really good applications and gets an opportunity to bring new people in and ask them if they don't make this round of selections to join another one of our open.
Yeah, we had twenty-one applications over seven slots.
Four, one.
Wow.
Twenty-one for the Johnston Drive Beach to look at what the future.
Oh, like a committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So and it was, you know, and the people did a nice job. So it's just, it's really hard to choose for neighbors like that. So really appreciate everybody who took the time to apply and would encourage them if they see something else, if they didn't make it. We'd love to have them other, in particular, I know Conservation has some spots. That's my report.
Okay, thank you.
Has any questions?
Questions for the select board? Okay. We have no award public hearings. We have a conceptual, Nick Lupus, Lake Street, represented by Ron Tabor, surveyor, not here.
Nope.
Okay. Zoning changes. There's been, I guess, a bunch of, not a bunch, but there's been two things that Tim has been working on. Joined by Kurt, who are one of them. And let's, let's take up the question of short-term rentals first. And Tim sent an email, which hopefully all of you have received and read. And essentially, if I, if I misquote you, please correct me. Essentially, what you said, Tim, was I got into the weeds and I suffocated. It's, it's very complex and it was your thought that a short-term rental ordinance would be more effective with the select board than as a zoning ordinance. Summarized correctly?
Yeah.
Anything you'd like to add?
Certainly. When I'm trying to understand something like that, I tend to want to get it on paper and try to pick it apart and understand where, why things are there and what they're saying, et cetera. I just kept going. Got all fired up. Anyway. So what I ended up writing is, is not, I was, I approached initially is, okay, if this is going to be a planning board or an instant, I got to start somewhere. And we had a draft to thinking about as well, let's add that. But the more I got into it, I said, this is just not a planning board. Just didn't feel like a planning board nor felt like it. Because of the people who need to force it, interact with it day by day. I don't know if you've read what I, what I wrote, but the more I've got to think about it, we just don't really have a role mechanism exercise any. I feel forty over the subject, so. That was my conclusion, not that you should suggest we don't go through the ordinance and pick it apart. Unless you guys feel differently that it should be a planning board or if you need to. I think we should just pass it on back to the select. Done with it for at least that part.
As, as I told Tim in my response to his email, I agree with you one hundred percent. And the only thing that I was thinking, which might pertain to our job as the planning board, would be to have something in our zoning regs, which basically says that a short-term rental is allowed in all districts. And my first thought was, well, let's do it by special exception. And then I thought further and, okay. The planning, the zoning board, if somebody came before, could not deny it legally. So why not just put by permit or by town permit as a sub-line? So that's my suggestion. And the reason, or my reasoning for suggesting that is when a property owner or potential property owner wants to know what they can do or can't do, the first place they go is the zoning regs, or at least that would be my perspective. No?
No, no, they should.
They should.
They go to him. Or they just.
Just do it.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's nothing that I'm wedded to very tightly. I just thought it would be a good thing to put it in the regs so that we're on, on record as, you know, you can do this anywhere in town. We're not restricting it. And if we want to go further and say permit required, we can do that or not. Kurt?
So back to like sort of Tim's premises, where's the connection between a short-term rental and zoning? Any more than a long-term rental or in zoning?
The connection would be sort of analogous to a bed and breakfast or a hotel. That's my thought. Celia agrees with me.
Yes, I do. And I want to add that somebody could want to wreck somebody's land to do something that should go before the zoning law. Or maybe it's a purpose that's not in the regs that's allowed. I think you gotta be ready for everything, the bigger rent. Rental, you know, unless it's defined in that ordinance.
Good.
I was just going to recommend if you're going to just put a blanket statement that it's allowed, that you just not even address it.
Right.
It's allowed.
Okay.
Can take it back because it's like.
Yeah, we did talk a little last night about, you know, potentially getting some feedback. So I think that's part of the exercise too, right? Like you guys are an appointed board. So getting some feedback about the different section because you guys deal with land use issues and the select board really doesn't. Certainly, if we make it in an ordinance and we wanted to have teeth and, and put a fine in it, then yeah, it needs to be an ordinance. But it, it would be, I think, helpful to get that kind of feedback. If you guys don't want to do that, I certainly understand.
Do you want to set aside some time, maybe in January, to provide feedback or people want to do, you know, make individual comments?
Would you rather just move it along before?
No, I don't think there's any rush on it. And we can do it simultaneously if we decide to.
What's your pleasure? Do this at some future meeting or do it individually and submit comments?
Well, I mean, it seems like we could, if we're, if we're ready, we could make a decision that this will not be a planning or ordinance section of the zoning ordinance. And then that providing feedback on whatever you eventually craft up to be the ADU ordinance to do that came up.
I'm hearing Ed and Kate say that they would like a little more feedback than this isn't in our wheelhouse. Are hearing you guys correctly?
If you could look through it, I'm sure there's sections that kind of pertain. I mean, it was right in that gray area of where it goes and it really comes down, like I said last meeting, to the enforcement mechanism. Are we going to write a zoning violation? Issue a ticket? That's really what it comes down to.
I mean, clearly, you know, if you want enforcement of an immediate problem, you're in the wrong place.
Yeah.
No, you can't do enforcement of immediate problem in arrears. So you're already too late. That's the, that's the real answer on that one. You have to get out in front of things, you know, anything. You can't make an ordinance to fix a past problem. So, you know, this is just.
No, 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 what I'm saying.
Party going on.
There's nothing you can do unless.
If it's a select board ordinance, the police can go issue a ticket.
Right.
For people out. If it's a zoning board ordinance, then we come back and write a letter that it's a zoning violation.
And it goes on for.
Yeah, I'm just saying if it was like.
Monday morning, get a letter.
I literally agree that I think it makes more sense on the blackboard side, but I do think the select board wanted some, some thought from you guys on the parking part and the things that you guys deal with more.
I mean, I can see that. I mean, it's, it's a, being a select board issue, but just as a board with experience and land use and, you know, change this or think about this type of thing. I have comments, but none of them are really of land use related, but just on the ordinance itself.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. You know, I've picked out a few things that I think would they're looking at, at the manager's level or the select board level before you finalize this.
But you want to finalize this before the next season, the next summer season, I think.
I think so. Our comments back, back to the select board by January sometime, in January.
I was going to say, if we're going to do that, it's going to have to go to town meeting. Relatively quickly.
The ordinance has to go to town meeting?
Yes.
Really?
That's what the attorney said because it's.
The rental one does?
Yeah.
Wow, interesting.
I can double check with him, but that's what it said. It's, it's really close and I, ordinance that puts restrictions on people.
In that case, because time is of the essence, I would suggest that we submit individual comments to Ed, Town Manager.
I agree.
Is everybody in agreement?
I agree.
Yeah, because I don't think, I don't think the point would be for us to agree on what the comment should be, right?
Right.
We should just send it to you.
I, I think a diversity, diversity of comment would be more useful to you.
I mean, I think also remember that sometimes you learn something in discussion that sparks an idea in your head. So sometimes it is helpful to have it.
We can, we can do that. And if there's
Anything we have.
I guess if there's competing interest, maybe I'll send it back. Question. And like I said, we can move forward.
And we should keep it simple too, so you don't get inundated with volumes of comments.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, I think our schedule is, is pretty full for the rest of the year.
Excuse me, I'm like, I think your schedule is pretty light.
Yeah.
Mr. Crowley's got his hand up.
Oh, Dan. Yeah, I guess my question's to Ed. When you say it has to go to town meeting, does that mean on the ballot or town meeting business?
It needs to be voted on in town meeting is what.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be on the ballot then?
Yes, it does.
Like any, like a zoning ordinance would be on, on the ballot?
On the Tuesday voting.
It could possibly be something as simple as, shall we grant the authority to regulate ADUs? Ordinance follows.
And I'll talk to him again, that's what he knew. So, before we get too much, there was the one that was originally presented to us, but from the select board or yourself. And then there was this one.
You're right.
Yeah, so which one are we going with?
You can look at both of them. I'll probably be moving forward with the one we presented to you, but I'll use the one that Tim presented to look at the comments and see if there's things we need.
Okay.
You guys can use one of both. If you like something out of the other one and want to highlight that, then you send it along. Send it to me and Rob. Rob will be the one that's mostly working on. Be the clearinghouse.
Okay. Next. Parking. Tim, why don't you talk about your suggestion on parking ordinance?
Well, I'm going to need to break out the stuff there.
I have it.
Yeah.
But everyone is going to be crank at it. I did hear anyone rented myself.
Yeah. I can figure out how to share a screen. I can put it up on the big screen.
Or we could come back to that.
I think Rob's gone though. Gets some.
That's two.
Cherry should be right up in the outer right corner. Did mine leave? Do you have that?
The right corner, I have dismiss.
Be going to the right.
See in the Phil, can you help me out? Cherry, green cherry.
Do you have a big leave right up in the top right corner?
No.
No.
Because I don't want to turn my neck. So I'm going to look when they.
Say you can.
Just that.
You got to hear.
Let somebody in.
Says he can share.
We're inside the.
Which one do you want up? Tim?
Um.
Probably the, the one that's the track changes on the digital order.
Yeah, I found that one easier to do with a track.
It's called?
In that list.
They both.
Just put it on there.
Four oh nine.
One. This. Red marks.
Yeah. And just put it on there.
Well, I can certainly call it up on, see if everyone else has got it printed. Maybe we're.
There it is.
Kate, you know how to share a screen on.
I sure do.
Come over here and enlighten me how to do it.
Even that. Oh, you know why? Because, hang on, you, did you join, you joined as a guest outside the organization, so you can't.
Probably.
He did.
Yep. So, hang on, I can do it.
He's showing it my, half of my screen as David guessed.
Yeah, okay. Let me open it and work. All right. I was going to say, I have it. I can do it if you want.
Number twenty.
Dude, I had a second external drive. Put it on the other one. Here.
Here, I just did it.
This one right here.
Okay, you and I both did the same task.
Yeah.
So I'll go out of it.
I think Kurt's got some. This is the clean here. This is.
Hit the red line. We sent both down.
Yep.
You want the clean, you want the marked up ones?
Whatever, we're not.
Yeah, I'll strike through it. Just keep it simple.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go. Let me just for Dan's.
I've got a paper copy.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so back to where we just were. Okay, sorry, guys. Go ahead.
So we had discussions about ten by twenties and nine by eighteens last time. Can't exactly remember where we ended up, but I think we were heading towards having both.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
So there's both. And then there was a discussion about who should authorize that.
Exactly.
Suggested the planning board here, although it could be at Rob's level.
I thought that we had settled on it would be a call for Rob.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I do.
You can make a couple of wording changes there to fix that up. And if you don't mind, we'll, we'll just that's what we'll do. And then we'll come back the next meeting with the final draft for.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Required number of spaces, just simplified this considerably. You know, there was mention of having the developer, property owner prepare a, yeah, parking study. So I didn't actually say parking study, but I think this essentially says that because you're this shall be sufficient. Well, and whose, whose opinion is sufficient? Well, it's the property owner's, because it the opinion.
Yeah.
This is my business. This is what I need.
Right.
I'm not going to spend money on lots or parking spots as I face this. I don't need the fourth. One space for lodging for commercial lodging and multi-towner residential. And this is where Kurt and I may want to your suggestions there. Okay. Just simplify that. There was wording in the other, the original ordinance about having, you had three bedrooms, you got three spaces and then each additional bedroom. It seemed overly complicated. And then if, if mixed-use projects are, are proposed, then the residential level must just have to be treated similarly. Yeah, scroll on down unless there's any.
Handicap doesn't change, right?
No, no change there. You might be wondering.
Well, I, I propose that because on the handicap section, it has that table that's on the next page down.
Yeah.
Just delete that table and just delete that table because it's empty. It's federal regulated. Number of spaces, size of spaces, where they have to be, it's all on the federal level.
And the engineers know that.
Right, so just.
So all we, all we put in is.
Right, well, when the, the paragraph, the line above that graph, you go scroll to, go up and down, whatever you.
Yeah.
Anyway. Yeah, keep, yeah.
Keep going. There.
Right there, stop. Just stop the paragraph or the sentence as, at disability act, period.
Right.
Yeah.
That's all you need.
That's all we need.
Get any more detail. Because they'll go to the disabilities act to find the detail.
Yeah, right.
Okay, we can strike that.
Did we set out to rewrite this whole thing?
No.
Okay, so here's my question. This goes to the like, if it's not an easy fix and we're going to be doing the whole zoning potentially over, do we want to get into this without doing comparables and looking at, you know what I mean? Like, I think this is a really great effort, but I just, if we're going to be, you know, this went from parking space to like the whole thing. I'm kind of like, are we going to be paying somebody to redo this next year? I could worry about that. Like we went from the size of the space.
They've, they've taken out redundancy.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, so but we're also, it's not just taking out redundancy though, it's taking out some things that I, I am not an expert on this. I would tend to look at other places and see, you know, maybe we think it's got too much detailing. I'm, I'm certainly not an expert on it. I wasn't really prepared. wasn't really prepared to rewrite the whole thing without.
Well, um, sort of, through your comments, there is, there's been several articles I've been seeing lately in the, um, just, just really recently on cities and towns around the country eliminating the parking requirements. Because from what we talked about, the, what was on the books was just outdated and always seemed to force everybody to build to the max. And never didn't need to. So they're just doing a blanket, like it, like we have here, let the developer decide how much he wants to build. And if it's a commercial, and if he underbuilds, then businesses go else. The customer goes somewhere else. The only critical to me is the residential, because you don't have that, at least the, the rental, the rental residential. You don't have the option of going somewhere else. Cause that's where your house is. That's where you're living. Well, not after you sign the lease, though. You sign, the, the developer says, oh, yeah, there's plenty of parking. Oh, okay. Sign the lease, then you find out, well, it's not quite plenty of parking. Plenty of parking if it's there when I show up.
You're doing that, but we didn't debate that.
Yeah, yeah, but I just thought I was trying to avoid that problem.
And the sections that, that I suggest we take out, none of us could even understand what the heck they were saying. Asked a number of times, does anyone know what this means?
There's more of that in there.
Yeah.
That's why I'm like, is this a, an, like, are we doing a full, like, instead of just doing, like, do a full re, like, like, commit this to being part of our full zoning update, since it's expanded from the size of a parking space to the whole?
I tend to agree with Kate's position.
It, it's not, I don't think you did a lot of hard work on this, because you did. Um, I just now we're looking once again and, uh, making a much longer ballot, too. Cause this is gonna
Really?
I'd like to, um, just say that, like, ZBA, we worked with, um, one of the things that we worked with was a house that had, they wanted to make it into apartments, and this was, I believe, on Flanders Street. It's one of those side streets up there. And we, through, I think through the ZBA, we did allow parking on the, in front of that building, and it could hold three cars. It's on the side of the road. It was just just close enough to keep off the road. But that's where the parking went with this building. So there, those are kind, that's a scenario that can happen. For the, when you're writing this, but I remember doing that. Cause he, they usually had to park in off the road in something, but that, we didn't let, we let them park on the side.
Where it is, I go by it every day. The snowplow goes through, those cars are buried.
Yep. I would agree with Kate, just because I think this needs a lot more work. They did a lot now, but I still have some really big concerns with the ten by twenty space that we're, we're maximizing impervious surface. We're making it, so we have a bigger parking problem downtown. There's just a lot of things that go into that. I think we're catering with that to a small demographic.
There's a section that we left in there was scrolling down, Business District. I didn't play with the wording on that. Um. It allows for, uh, us to, as planning board, make a lot of stipulations on basic basic parking lot stipulations in there. So when you say downtown, there's all kinds of wiggle room in there to already anywhere.
I just look at things like Whitney Hall and how many spaces we're gonna lose because of that. And I, I don't know that it's been fully
You could simply go and what you want. Yeah, I mean
Well, I think that's a bad practice of the town, though, writing an ordinance that you don't want it. And that's one of the things we have really, in recent years, we've been doing appearances in front of the planning board and really committing to following our own rules without some variability. So I think I
We do follow them.
Yep.
But you're not, no, nobody's gonna ask you to go back and re-line the parking lot.
No, we're getting ready to repave and
And we'll have to land a
And we're getting ready to possibly do the greenery.
Well
It's not just us, but if you look at a business for the same thing, to get the ten by twenties, you're gonna expand that lot. If they're trying to get the same number of spaces. And I just don't know that it's been fully
I agree. I mean, we, we could talk about this for two meetings, and maybe, maybe we would reach a consensus.
Well, perhaps we shouldn't send Tim off to do all this work for nothing.
Well, no.
I didn't realize we were rewriting. I thought we were stuck on
Right?
Parking.
So, um. Maybe we need to be more careful of that in the future. Cause it doesn't make any sense for people to spend time and we're not going to adopt it, which I, you know, I understand the, the argument and agree with it, but
Okay. Sometimes you do all the work and then you realize that there's more
With that, I don't, I don't think the time was wasted.
No, cause we're gonna be able to
Great work, and if we do a zoning rewrite of it.
We've got a starting
Yeah.
Do we want to settle on, because there is an inconsistency in the ordinance stuff. Ten by twenty, nine by eighteen is in there, and we need to at least solve that perhaps.
Well, the, the, the original, uh, premise here was quick, small wins that we could make this time around.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Um, and it's, it's turned out not to be a small, quick win.
Right.
Right?
Boy, do we, we really thought you were getting it, though.
So, the, the original small, quick win was to say ten by twenty
Yep.
unless constraints of the lot require
But as it turns out, it's not that simple.
It's not.
It's not that simple. So we're just gonna move this to the side. We'll reuse this work whenever we decide to rewrite the entire zoning regs next year sometime, um, and just move forward.
So we're gonna leave the ten by twenty.
I don't think you touch it.
How are you gonna measure this, the, the stripes?
I mean, we can start looking at that, but like Kurt said, Rob found it out at the planning convention, that people are starting to really tail down their parking requirements. They're doing away with minimums. They're looking at not requiring sizes, and I think it's something we need to study. Instead of coming up with what we think is best. Let's see what, what the world's really doing.
So for this town meeting, the default is we don't change anything.
Correct.
Do you prefer that, or?
Guys decided that. I said, I'm
I said, I said prefer.
I, I am
I think, I think that's
I can't vote either. I'm unholding it.
It's just generated.
Yeah.
The conversation is just generated. We're not touching.
I mean, that, that seems to be the
Move on.
That seems to be what, you know, what you're saying, what I'm saying. I think Kate is saying that. Um.
Also likes smaller parking spaces.
What, what
Kate also likes smaller parking spaces, so, you know, I think, yeah, I think we just aren't there, and it's not, because I don't think you guys are doing great work.
So we just table this
Yep.
For some future rewrite of the zoning regs. When we have a professional planner helping us who can do all, a lot of the legwork and tell us what's current in planning and what peer towns are doing and all that kind of information that they probably have at their fingertips and would take somebody here a bunch of times to do a really thorough study. So, let's move on to ADUs. It's page here. And do I remember correctly that we had passed
Anybody need a copy of that?
Passed Rob when coming up with the language.
Correct.
Okay.
So some slightly different language from the last time we looked at this, based on your comments and the notes that I taken. Having to do with, uh, if you have two ADUs, how will that work? You could, obviously, you can have, uh, attached or detached by, uh, by right and two detached in one building is, is in my, uh, closed language here. And then the, if you're doing two attached, constructed in the single-family home, that multi-family building code would apply. I think that was something
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Just by our separation and those kind of things.
Yeah.
Is there a, is there a portion of the ordinance that deals with ADUs?
Yeah, of, of our ordinance?
Yeah. There's a definition in our ordinance as to what an ADU is.
Okay.
And then we are now governed by the state zoning, essentially. It starts, say, six seventy-four, colon, thirty-six. That's where it starts. And the state has basically made statewide zoning in, and in all residential districts, ADUs are allowed by right. Um, municipality can have some further regulation. Like, we could require a special exception for detached. Some, some communities do that. My, my hometown does that. Um. The, the minimum square footage, or maximum square footage of eight hundred square feet is, is in that language as well, from the state. The, uh, common door is another thing the state requires. If it's attached, there needs to be a door between the units. Doesn't have to be unlocked, but it has to exist. Um.
Why?
That is a really weird one, if you ask me. So I think the thinking was originally it was gonna be family that was living in the ADU, and I think that might have been why they insisted on the door between the two. And that's, again, attached, so you have to have a door from the ADU to the main house.
Does that give you a multiple egresses?
Yeah.
I think so, but
But if it's locked?
But if it's locked, it doesn't have to, exactly.
Doesn't have to be locked.
No, it says, it doesn't say it has to be unlocked. So it's the point of having a door if it's gonna be locked, you know what I mean?
You could always kick it in.
You can kick it in.
Something not to worry about. I mean, my gosh, they're not gonna build an ADU without a door to, to two units.
Well, if you had a separate entry for the ADU, why do you need the door between them? It's, but, yeah, it's And the building code is one that we insist on for egress, for bedrooms. You have to have egress anyways.
So what, where, where in the zoning words would this, would this fit? You have to create a new section.
Yeah, it'll probably be something like four twenty-two, I think is the next one in line.
So are we, as a group, willing to recommend this language that Rob has crafted for us? Do you wanna make any changes? Go around the table, Kurt.
I have a problem with two detached ADUs. Even if they're in a single building. Uh. And I just think, then you're gonna have three units on the same lot.
If the lot can support it by the way of sewer or septic and parking. Assuming that we still have parking regs of some sort.
Setbacks.
I mean, when does that
Setbacks. I mean, there, there's all sorts of, of constraints
Yeah.
that might not allow an external or detach
I mean, it's basically becoming a multi-family um, lots. Just two separate buildings. Cause you're gonna have three three different living quarters.
Mm-hmm.
Good idea.
I mean eight hundred square feet is not a lot.
Well, well, it's
In law number one.
It won't be thirteen hundred for two detached.
Right, but, you know, for, for each each person or family or couple renting, um, it's eight hundred square feet is not a whole lot of space.
Size of a
It's four, it's four parking spaces.
Oh, no.
Size of most apartments.
It's a small apartment.
I mean, if you guys didn't want, you could have one attached, one detached. There's your two, if you wanted to make it that way. But I just think giving people the flexibility to do
Absolutely.
Like, uh, we had, I mean, not, not that this is an ADU, but we, uh, were, the Pan Insurance used to be on Route Four, uh, Doctors Who Care.
Yes.
Doctor Buthay's office was there at one point. There was a little Gambrel garage. The gun shop was there years ago. They, they converted that. That's two apartments.
Thank you.
The garage level is one apartment, and then upstairs, like a loft apartment upstairs.
That was, uh, that really wasn't an ADU, though.
That's right. Yeah, that's what I was saying. It wasn't, it wasn't an ADU, but that could have been. I mean, they, they've got, they've got seven units at that place. Two in the garage and five in the main complex, so that's
So if, if they, if those were just vacant buildings, and they were coming to us for plan to do that, we'd be treating it as a multi-family
Correct. Operation. Yeah, no, I was just referencing that, because, again, you could take your garage, you know, and turn it into two ADUs. That's what I'm kind of pointing to. Or barn, stairs downstairs.
Yep.
Sugar House is what we did at my farm. The Sugar House is now an ADU.
They lost installers.
It's somewhat, um, possible, I'm trying to figure out someone could really play with the wording and end up with three ADUs
Look at that.
And the primary residence.
Doesn't say I have a word, wording.
Hey, I'm not following.
Yes, we have one conversation at a time. Kurt has the floor.
Say that again.
Well, I'm just concerned that, I'm not reading it this way. I don't see but if someone could potentially twist this around, twist this wording around so that there is a primary residence, attached ADU, and then two detached ADUs.
I think that's what it says, and it also is going to allow two of the
See, that's why
Two of the
I think there needs to be some clarification that's it would be a maximum of two ADUs per lot. Just to eliminate any potential.
So what if we change the first sentence to a maximum of two ADUs of up to eight hundred square feet shall be allowed in all residential districts? The second maybe
That would eliminate any potential
Right. Yeah.
Certain wordsmithing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, a, a maximum of two ADUs of up to eight hundred square feet.
Each.
Each.
Yeah.
You may be able to just add on the end that more than two. Simplify.
That's good.
And I, Rob, you mentioned, um Plainfield had some phrase or clause about how the, uh, the architectural appearance of that ADU, hatch building, if it was gonna be built say a building purposely built on a lot to, to accommodate two ADUs. Your main house, gonna purposely build a two unit apartment building, extra all those ADUs. But that needed to architecturally and be similar to the existing structure.
Yeah, that was in there. Uh, my experience with that, having formerly been involved in town government in Plainfield, that was very hard to and I think it's very hard to regulate class and style.
Yes.
And I think if you get into that, it's sort of a slippery slope.
Mm-hmm.
And it's very, very, uh, interpretive or, uh, you know, it's left up to somebody's opinion.
Objective.
Subjective. That's the word I was looking for. So I don't know, and if, if that's something, if that's where you guys want to go.
Nope.
I, I'm not a big proponent of that, because it's like you know, how do you, how do you enforce that? Somebody says, oh, that's absolutely no, it's not. And then you get
Some people will like it, and some people will hate it.
Can you take that to a court and actually kind of back it up?
Talked about, well, we've got two nice eighteen hundreds vintage downtown homes, like on Stevens Street, and they're fairly large lots there. Um. Neighbor puts in, uh, Neighbor puts in uh. Two seven hundred fifty foot mobile homes, one on the side of his house.
Has to be one building.
He puts one seven hundred fifty square foot mobile. Single wide. You can do.
Did you do that?
Yeah.
You can do that.
Portable housing.
By state law.
By state law.
No, I kind of, I have faith that somebody that's bought a pretty house on Stevens Street is probably not gonna do that.
We can't, right?
By, by just reality there, I mean.
It hasn't, yeah.
Now, communities can also say, this is something that's in the state law. That there has to be an owner occupant in in one of the units. I'm not, I'm not a proponent of that either. I don't think.
Well, that was one of my questions because that sort of ties into the other thing, the um ordinance, the short-term rental ordinance. Um, as that requirements. Or somebody close by, but I just wonder how that plays in.
Yeah, we, uh, the way that we crafted the short term was that you had to have a primary point of contact within a reasonable response.
Right, well. But with the ADU, you can have three rentals. You can rent your primary and your two ADUs.
Right. I'm less concerned about long term as than I am with with short term. The short term are the people that are showing up like, where do I put my trash? I have no idea, you know? Whereas the long term, they gotta figure that out pretty quick.
Yeah, I think, I think that addresses.
And I, I, again, if you're looking for housing. By making the owner occupancy, that's a sort of, you know. Uh, eliminates that. I actually went to this ADU, the guy that wrote the book on ADUs, I went to his seminar. We had him eleven, three, four years ago. He was not a proponent of owner occupancy. Even though that's kind of the reality, what really happens, a lot of, I mean, I have an ADU at my house. Tenants downstairs from me, so. For a trick, but uh, we have, in Enfield, we have people that have bought properties, renovated them. And now they're a main house and an ADU, and it's, so it's red bull, two, two units of housing rental. Think it's good. I mean, if if our goal is to try to increase housing stock, try to eliminate. Obstacles and barriers is, I would recommend, but. It's up to you guys, what you wanna do.
I'd like to see some form of architectural standards. Because otherwise, we get someone who follows all the rules and we end up with a dollar store. I mean, nobody questioned their.
But interestingly, Linda, I'll counter you.
Yeah.
We did.
The dollar store was built to our design standards.
Correct. That's exactly what I'm saying.
So it failed by having design standards. It was a failure there.
No, 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 no.
Design standards, it failed. By um us not having standards.
No, it it fa- it failed because we did not know. The workarounds that corporate America uses to get around our design standards. And in the next iteration of our zoning. We are probably gonna have something, I don't remember the technical term, and maybe Ed, you can help me out on this. But it's a technical term that specifies the amount of opacity in a window.
Cause that's where they got us.
Because that's where they got us, exactly.
I agree with Rob. I think turning it cause developers to have to try to find the loophole that doesn't work. Got what we call.
Yeah. I don't know. It's just like what we were just talking about. It's like with the parking, if you're like trying to over-regulate, you sort of. The slippery slope, you know, you're.
Yeah.
Let the, let the market kind of handle this. And, you know, I think as we reevaluate zoning in general. Obviously, there's important stuff that we want, especially use control. But I think, like I said, class and style. We got class and style way back in the old days when there was no regulation of it at all.
Exactly.
People tend to wanna have classes out, but I think if you overthink, I think the form-based code might actually be a little bit of an overreach. Just my opinion. You guys can.
It's a discussion for next year with our zoning consultants.
Yes. So I have heard, I mean, as I talk to developers, and they start looking at properties in the Route Four zone. And they're like, oh, God, you're gonna make me do this, 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 and this. Sloped roofs, windows on the front, parking in the back, all these kind of things. We just talked to the developer the other day, he's like, and we we actually lost out on a great opportunity. Because they looked at our form-based Route Four code and they said, nope. We wanna build what we wanna build, not what you want us to build.
Right.
And I actually have a little bit of in- internal knowledge on the, the developer that built the exits off of ninety-three. Where the state liquor stores are, those huge complexes. The state had kept kept coming up with, this is what we want. And they put it out, please submit bids for this. And they would get no response, no response. And finally, the governor of New Hampshire, Governor Lynch at that time, he called up his friend who was one big developer, and said, why aren't you submitting? Response to our RFP. And the developer said, it's because you're telling me what you want us to build. Where I wanna build what I wanna build. And when they finally sort of, the state sort of stepped back and said, okay, show us what you wanna build. That's what they got what they got. And it is amazing, as you know, I mean, that, that is an absolute goldmine, and it's beautiful. I mean, they've got beautiful. Visit New Hampshire in there, there's sloped roofs. I mean, it's all, that place, it's the same guy that owns Common Man.
Right.
And he, I went to Leadership River Valley. He came and talked to us. And he said that place is unbelievable. They thought they would sell five hundred cheeseburgers a day. They do five thousand cheeseburgers a day in that place.
Wow.
And it's absolutely, I mean, it's a great representation of New Hampshire, liquor store included, I guess, but.
It says leave your money here without being that tacky.
It's got the water wheel inside and travel and tourism's got a huge presence.
I love it. I go there.
Ed? With that, back to ADUs, if you don't mind. I have a wording change for the second sentence.
Go ahead.
I think it would be a little simpler if we said something like. When three residential living units are located within a single building. The New Hampshire multi. It gets confusing when you're trying to wrap ADUs in that and bring it back around this. Pretty much anytime there's three residential units or more.
Why don't we say? When. Three dwelling units are within a single structure. Multi-family building codes.
You do what you want. There's probably a definition as well in the fire code. I can talk to you.
Well, we move on to R-one density. Are we done with? ADUs? Okay, so the suggestion is. Increase of density in R-one lots with town water and sewer. Minimum lot size shall be one acre, except for dwellings, the minimum lot size shall be one acre for dwelling units. On lot water and sewer, but maybe. One quarter acre for a dwelling where water and sewer are used. And strike paragraph. You about no lot shall have more than one dwelling or two building.
Right, two different. Those are two different sections.
They are, they are, they are two different, and I lumped them together. The the key here, I think, is the sewer, not necessarily the water. I wonder if we should talk about. Um, the reason why we're doing these lot sizes.
Dan, let's talk.
Dan?
I'm here. And that was, that was what I wanted to talk about. Because in looking at. What we really want is we want them on sewer. Because if you keep this the way it is, we put in a sewer line down Route Four A. Nobody on that is on town water. Which means that they would still have to be one acre lots. And if you take Lower Shaker Village. Okay, all those lots are non-conforming under this change. If the change is just sewer, because they have their own water system, they have a superb water system. Um, the ninety percent of those lots would then become conforming lots. Which means anytime anybody wanted to do anything, they wouldn't have to keep going to the zoning board. So I guess I just as soon see that, just say, on town sewer. For that reason. As well as you've got some five, six acre lots. Out there, that would probably be prime development. So that that would be the change I'd like to see us make.
That's an excellent point.
Tim, you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, I I think that should say, actually, um. Community uh water system. That that would, that would therefore treat the Shaker Village water system as if it was a municipal system. And and there's nothing wrong with a community water system. Right. As regulated as a municipal system. Sometimes they're even bigger.
But how about that five or six acre lot that could be developed?
Well, if they can put a community water system, they can get it, but well-drilled and certified and tested and. The distribution system approved by the state and so forth, um, then yeah, I think that qualifies in. This, this uh, this section.
I I guess I'm, I'm in agreement with Dan that we should just write the reference to water entirely.
The problem with doing that is, um, that means it's each lot's gonna have its own own well. And you have a seventy-five foot radius. Around that well.
It's gonna take up most of your quarter.
Yep, yeah.
No, yeah.
Well, that, that radius has, there's a form you can fill out um to move it so that it's tighter. I've given that form to someone recently. I don't remember what it's called, um, but you can include. For certain reasons. I just don't, don't recall what they are, so.
Well, I mean, it's, uh, structures are okay, but you can't cross the lot line without an easement. With your radius.
Yeah, that's.
Seventy-five feet from any septic system and then lot lines.
Or it's from the lot line as well.
Right, yeah. No, because you don't control what's on the other side of your line.
And in in this case, you don't have to worry about the septic system. Because you're saying they're on town sewer.
Right, if they're on town sewer, that's eliminates that issue. But it's still, you still run into the issue of a, a property line. Being too close.
Yeah, but if. That's, that's a lot issue. If they can't, if they can't do it, then obviously they're not going to be able to have. A larger, a more units. As long as they can fit within the state mandate of the seventy-five feet, I don't, you know, it doesn't become an issue.
But there's a casing length that goes with the footage, because this is something I. I dealt with for somebody else recently and sent them on to talk to DES, but I can see right here, there's a minimum casing length, so. As you get a longer casing, your setback minimum seems to drop. It's, this is, I'm in the DES files right now, so I think. It's something that, yes, it's important, but it's not the end of the world, right? You drill a deeper well. It's expensive to drill a deeper well, but. And then you fill, and the form is called setback reduction form, so.
What kicks in a community, like? Two houses connected the same well?
Yeah.
Without uh, the end of community?
It's a formula they use, uh, so many connections and people using it over a period of time, so. I would say. If you're taking a one acre lot and putting four houses on it with a shared well, that won't be a community. Shared well.
So if we, if we only say community water or municipal water, then you couldn't do what you just, just mentioned. A one acre lot with four.
Unless you said. Shared well or something.
Are shared wells allowed in New Hampshire?
I think so, no, I think so.
They do exist.
You you definitely have to have wording to protect people, was like easements, basically they say that you have access to the water.
Cause I know in Vermont, they are not allowed, or they're phasing them out.
Okay. I know that we've got at least one or two of them here, where if a well is drilled, and it's absolutely superb, like. Hundred gallons a minute or something crazy. Like, why do I need to drill another well when I develop the next door neighbor's property? I'm just gonna hook it up. There's plenty of water here. And so I think there are some instances of that. But if you guys eliminate the water reference at all, I wouldn't have to worry about it.
Not for that. Take the water reference. Just make the sewer reference.
Brad?
Agreed.
Tim? Not agreed.
Well, I I have. Have a problem with this section. Two reasons. Both of them. One. We come up with a draft language that all agree on, then it has to be sold with votes. And I think, um. I'm not sure that we're gonna be successful with it. I think some of the issues we've raised will. Bring people to discuss it. This is not a small minor change. This is not a tweak. This is a significant. Change in the zoning order. And. I, believe me, I I really feel like we do need to increase density down town. I do, but. Think this needs some more thought. Like any of the other. Changes we wanna propose that that might have some. Complexity to them. I think we need to hold off on this until we have, I said before, the. Special assistance and variety. One of the reasons I have to bring this up is. Just take a look at this. Think I've got a.
Need more copies of that?
That's okay.
Hey, you can share if you'd like.
Basically, what.
I can share with Phil.
What concerns me is that. This, this map on the front page, I did twenty eighteen, I pulled some data from the US Postal Service. Mail routes, and I was doing this for Mass Roman Community Health Center. We wanted to know. The location of the health center, which is that circle right there. Where, how were people transiting this area and where would they end up? Wanting to go to the dentist or a medical facility, and what was pretty dang clear, then give that the mountain across the middle. So forth. Well, I I remembered this. And. You look at that, what that says there, this suggests there's seven hundred and seventy-two people that live in the village, basically. And I looked at um recent data from the postal service, census and what have you. And I think if we. We could calculate that accurately, how many people actually live in the village? And in your mind, what is the village that, you know, it's the compact area here, I think. Without getting too into the weeds about what the boundary of that is. It's probably somewhere between eight hundred and, say, twelve hundred people, but it's in that range. Unless I misinterpret things. We've got, um. Puzzles, a puzzle concept before us. To put uh, a hundred and fifty-four dwelling units, seventy-five acres. Leave, if we enact this, what that's gonna allow, and then correct me if I'm wrong here, that that will double, so we'll have three hundred and some odd units. Which means that two point two five or two point three people per household, which is. Census and postal service says we have. We're basically talking about uh. Six hundred, seven hundred people living in the village. But not over a period of time where we gradually get used to the growth in. But not over a period of time where we gradually get used to the growth of house. But it happens like within two years. Double goes in the ground, and all of a sudden we got. Three hundred housing units for. And. Question is. Are we really prepared for that?
I don't think that that scenario can play out because not all of the lots are gonna be, there's so many other requirements. You can't just assume that the lots are all gonna meet, um, because they're still gonna have to go on the front edge and other.
Kate, what I'm talking about though is proposal that was submitted to us already.
That's just a concept.
Yeah, well, we can't talk about that without them here, so. And he has a right to be here, so.
It's a potential what if.
I understand, but.
We already have the motion that it's carried that we're gonna put this on the warrant, it's right here in the minutes, we've already, we've already argued this.
Yeah, and I think I'm really uncomfortable with the doing this targeting one group and talking about one set of building and, uh, you know. That's something that's gonna be a larger discussion, that they said they were gonna come back for another conceptual, so we just focus on the other lots and what what we want our downtown to look like in the downtown city.
Yeah, and the planning board already passed that motion last week, yeah, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
It was approved.
Yeah.
And I I would suggest that. In that. Village area. Yeah, there are some vacant lots which could see a lot of intensive development all at once, possibly. But oh, I don't know how many lots are there now. Um, I'm going to hazard a guess that at least sixty or seventy-five percent. Already are developed. And. I would. Find it very hard to believe that all of those lot owners. All at once would wanna subdivide their lots. And put in additional, or you know, and so that additional housing can be put in.
That is not what I'm suggesting.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
Now, what, what I'm, what I'm trying to point out here is that. With the A D U. Addition to, or penance to the zone, so you're gonna get, like you say, a few additional houses come online or housing units. Just the next few. Trying to infill between buildings essentially, adding A D Us, that sort of thing. And you will get. Four or five acre lot that happens to be near the water and sewer, that will end up with eight or nine houses on. That's all fun, really, I I. That will happen, it'll happen gradually over a period of years. But not hypothetical, not trying to what if, but there was actually a concept proposal suggested to us. Of a hundred and fifty-four housing units. On town water and sewer, that. Words right out of the developer's mouth, that that would increase double that if. If we were allowed higher density, so there's gonna be three hundred or so housing units on that hillside. That is not hypothetical, that that was put forward before us. They're gonna come back with a new concept design, or maybe, maybe they decide that it's just not financially viable to do that. Lots of other reasons why that may be the case, but.
Maybe D O T will say we can't, we can't handle that many yards, cut off that road and it'll all be blocked. That's the, that's, that's.
Yeah, but if you take this. This section right here and apply it to that project. That's what you'll end up, and I'm I'm just saying that, no. It really, it's not a given.
It's not a given.
And we really, they should be sitting here for another conceptual if we're gonna have this.
Okay, we'll just leave it as a, there is a three, a hundred and fifty acre pa- vacant parcel on top of.
I'm not comfortable about playing this game.
In this area.
No.
That could be subdivided into quarter acre lots.
I think you guys are setting us.
And just leave it at that.
Sorry about that. What I'm worried about is. My sewer bill every three months, I wanna get more people helping to pay for that sewer system, period. They could go to the town people and say, hey. If we get more houses on this sewer system, guess what? Sewer rates might go down. I think it's gonna be a lot of people gonna happy about that.
And a a multifamily is gonna have to go through site plan. And there's a lot of. Reasons. Why a site plan might limit. The number of. Um dwelling units on a single lot or. Series of lots, you know, Phil mentioned D O T, that could be one of them. Capacity of the town's water system, that could be another limiting factor. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes into it. And I would not automatically assume that just because. You allow, in theory. One dwelling unit per quarter acre lot. That that's what you're gonna get in every single instance.
I think there's one other thing that you have not talked about tonight, which we did talk about before, and that is the number of non-conforming lots where I need to do something very minor. That's a sensible change or sensible upgrade requires a variance, right? And so some of these are not even gonna be a, hey, let's divide, it's just gonna simplify and make it so that we're not sending somebody, because that's, we do have quarter acre lots in places, right?
We do.
It could make a lot more lots in town conforming.
Yeah, well, but this is only water sewer lots though. Yeah, so and most of the non-conformings with the.
Go up Maple Street.
At most, a lot of the downtown lots don't conform.
May Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, well, I mean, it's, sounds like it's gonna go forward, but my, my concern is that it's. Be mature to put this on the ballot this year. And when they're gonna do a complete rewrite of the zoning.
But you're arguing, you're arguing last, last, two weeks ago, it's in the minutes, we passed it.
Well, we did.
We passed it. We voted on it.
Haven't had the public hearing, haven't had the public hearing.
No, but so. We decided by vote.
So stop arguing.
Hey, guys, I'm gonna be, like, I'm super tired. Because I was early last night, so I guess if there's stuff that we have to finish for business, I would respectfully ask to consider doing that, um, I, I'm usually this way, but. I had a late night. And. Late early morning and a lot of things for town, and if we could.
Okay, let's, let's try to move this along, um, since we decided that. A density increase or a lot size decrease. Is something that we wanted to put on the ballot. We decided this. Two weeks ago. Um. Is the language that is written here. Which says minimum lot size shall be one acre except for dwellings in which the minimum lot size shall be one acre per dwelling. Dwelling unit with on lot water and sewer, but maybe quarter acre lot size for a dwelling where municipal water and sewer are used. Do we wanna go with that, or do we wanna strike? Uh.
I think we had agreed to, to strike the waters.
The water, yeah. And why?
I like saying community water.
Okay. Strike it, community water, or keep it, those are the choices.
Yeah, um, I don't think water needs to be in there.
Sewer works for me.
Sewer works for me too.
Sewer works for me.
Yep, so.
Okay. So we're gonna strike sewer, I mean, we're gonna strike water, I'm sorry. Um. Little word sniffing here. Minimum lot size shall be one acre except for dwellings in which the minimum lot size shall be one acre per dwelling unit. That, that's not making sense to me. Does anybody else have that problem?
Wow.
Yeah, but that's what you approved. We did not approve that. We, we're, we're discussing the final edits at this point, Kurt.
Yeah.
Um. To make it read better and perhaps even correctly, minimum lot size shall be one acre. Per dwelling unit with on lot. Water and sewer supply, well, with on lot water and sewer. But maybe one quarter acre lot size for a dwelling where municipal sewer is used. Does that make it sound better?
Used or available.
Uh, available, yes, available. Thanks for that.
Yeah, instead of use.
You got that, Rob? So it's gonna read minimum lot, okay, increase the, okay. Minimum lot size shall be one acre per dwelling unit. With on lot water and sewer supply. But maybe one quarter acre lot size for a dwelling. For dwellings plural, where municipal sewer is available.
I think the reason why it's use.
Yeah.
Makes that hook up, just that it's there.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I agree, they have to hook up.
That's why it's used.
Because we've been for a few.
Okay.
It's also a state requirement, they have that.
Where sewer is connected.
Connected's a better word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about changing uh with on lot water and septic? When they say, when it says sewer, to me it.
Yeah.
Sounds like municipal.
Yeah, okay.
Septic's good.
Right.
Septic system?
Yeah.
You mean municipal water in your own septic system?
No, it's that previous.
Yeah, I have that.
If it says on lot water and sewer, what they're, what they're referring to is septic system. That part of the sentence, and then below, we're talking about municipal.
Okay.
What's the question?
I don't really understand that, saying for a septic system, so aren't you? Not putting in sewer?
So it says it's gotta be one acre per dwelling unit with on lot water and sewer.
Right.
But I was saying, that's, that's not what they need, they need a septic system, that por- portion of that. On lot water and septic system. And then it goes on to the next part, but it may be one quarter. For a lot where municipal water is used. A municipal sewer is used.
Well, so it's either septic or sewer.
Okay, the second part of the R one, R one language was deleting paragraph U. Which says no lot shall have more than one dwelling or principal building. We agreed up, Kurt?
Well, I would leave principal building. Because you've been, you delete that, you run the risk of having two principal buildings on the same lot.
Yeah.
The A D U is an accessory to the principal. You have to have a, at least one principal building to have an A D U.
I.
No.
Boy, no.
Then it becomes a, if you don't have a primary building, the A D U.
Will become, will become the primary building.
Right, so that, so there you have a primary building.
Right. Your first, your.
So you can have a primary internet.
Yeah, but you can build an eight hundred square foot primary building.
Right, right, but one of them has to be, you can't have. What I'm saying is, if you strike principal building, you can have two full sized houses on one lot.
Right.
Why not? Doesn't say you can't. You strike that language, uh, in no way does it say you cannot do that.
The reason we were striking this language.
Because you can't, the si- the the second dwelling would be.
No, no, you're not gonna come, no, it's gonna be bigger than eight hundred square feet, you're gonna have two, two thousand square foot homes. Primary on your same lot, if you strike that, if you strike that.
You can't hit, you can't hit two thousand.
Yeah, why not?
A D U is restricted, dude.
It's not gonna be an A D U. If you strike, that's language, is what I'm saying. That's why that language is like there now.
So we have to have no lot shall have more than three structures?
No, primary, principal building.
What makes it a principal building that you call it that?
Yeah.
The first building you build on the lot.
First one is your principal building, your first living unit is your principal building.
Right.
And then you can build your eight hundred square.
And then you can build two eight hundred square foot.
Yeah.
I think the reason it's in there, I think what he's, what he's on to is. We, we do allow two family home, correct? Commonly referred to as a duplex. And people are like, well, can I build two homes on my, and you say, no, no, duplex means they have to be. Attached to each other, that's what a duplex is, and I think that's what that means, a principal building.
Yes, principal building, yeah.
I think that's why it's in there, because we do have, sometimes people are like, hey, I bought a place.
Pre-zoning.
I wanna have two houses. We have, like you said, pre-zoning, we do have.
I think we have discussed on Brown, was it Brown Street or something?
And that's why the A D U. Uh, I would say references principal dwelling.
Right.
In the A D U language, it makes reference to. One principal dwelling and one A D U or more.
Good. agree with that.
It wouldn't say that the lots will have more than one principal building?
Yeah.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah, say that again, please, I was looking somewhere else.
More than one principal building.
Um.
How do you build, how do you build multifamily in?
That, that, that's why we were gonna take this paragraph U out. Because. Of the previous thing that we were discussing. Which says minimum lot size shall be one acre except for dwellings in which minimum lot size shall be one acre per dwelling unit. Um, blah, blah, blah. And.
If you just.
In the hypothetical case of a large lot. Where somebody wanted to put several dwelling units. In one or more. Buildings or structures. Um. This paragraph U was a contradiction. To the other thing about. You know, one. Um, one dwelling unit per quarter acre or half acre or whatever it happens to be. Linda?
If you just strike the words dwelling or, it would read no lot shall have more than one principal building.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's my.
Yeah.
Disgestion.
Yeah.
You have to have, one of the buildings is gonna be called.
Get there by just striking those two words.
And the principal building could be a duplex.
Right, right, it's still a building.
Right.
Could a principal building be the same size as a secondary building?
They're both eight hundred square feet.
Right, but.
As long as.
But when you, when you go for a street address, it's like. You know, you, it's like one of those buildings is gonna be called your built, your main head building. Your principal place of, for that lot, everything else is same as building a shed. It's in the accessory to the main structure. Everything else is an accessory to the main structure.
You have some of the builds up.
Subordinate.
Beautiful homes downtown that you could have carriage house that might be bigger, some of them, I think the barn and the carriage house is bigger than the house.
Right, you can build.
You only can use eight hundred square feet of it, right? Inside, but it might be bigger, so I don't think you wanna put a size on the envelope, I think it's the, the eight hundred is within the envelope, and that's the one that needs.
So let me ask, if I had a, uh, let's say I had a. Ten acre lot. And. I wanted to put a. Forty unit apartment building. I could do that with this. This change, yes?
Yes. Cause that's the principal building.
Yeah, it's one, one building, yeah.
But if you wanted to do twenty. Twenty units in one building and twenty units in another building, all on that same lot. According to paragraph U, I don't think you could do it.
Correct.
Right.
So, the, therefore, we have a contradiction between paragraph U. And paragraph K, whether we amend paragraph K to be. This quarter acre with municipal sewer or don't amend it, we still have the contradiction. Yes. K is the minimum lot size shall be one acre except for dwellings in which the minimum lot size shall be.
Yeah, but they're dealing with lot size, not how many buildings, struc- primary buildings are on that lots. It's the primary, uh, principal building. It can only be one principal building. Can't have two full size, two thousand plus or greater than eight hundred square feet. Living units on the same lots.
Well, let's say in my scenario, I had, I wanted to put, uh, I could have, I could have up to forty apartments in this one building. Could have a building with thirty in it, some building with ten.
No.
Because there'll be two principal buildings.
Well, the principal building's the one with thirty, it's the bigger.
You can only have one principal, then, then the other ones not an ADU, too big, unless you can get eight hundred, those apartments in eight hundred square feet.
That's a loss.
Right, right.
But you can't because you're only limited to two ADUs, so you can't put twenty in or ten.
Well, it's, but, my problem, my argument is that a principal building can be any physical size.
Okay.
ADUs are restricted to eight hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you delete principal building from that line. Now you can have two principal, two buildings of any, of any size on the same lot. There is no building with square footage restrictions.
Long as you meet the setbacks.
As you meet the setbacks.
Yep.
You could have seven.
That may be what, what you wanna do.
Well, you know, it's.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, if you're trying to increase the allowable density.
This is townwide, too.
This is what?
This is townwide.
No, this is R one.
R one has to be on the sewer.
Oh, yeah, we can't expand the sewer right now, we're. On projects.
Paragraph U is, is R one.
Right.
Yeah, still, um.
Dan, you're being.
I think you're opening yourself up to.
Yeah, I am, cause I'm, I'm, I'm getting confused. Because I do believe there has to be a principal building.
So can the accessory or subordinate building be the same size? Or must it be small?
If it's, well, if it's same size, both gonna be eight hundred square feet.
No, that's an ADU.
Well, no, the principal.
Only one of them can, can be called a principal building.
Right.
Well, I, I say you look back at your apartment scenario, I mean. If you want a bigger lot to be able to have. Some apartments on it, you can have one large forty, like you said, would you want to allow two twenties? I, I think we would on a bigger lot, and this would not allow it unless you strike that.
But you can do, you can subdivide the lot, too. Yeah, if it's that big of a lot, you can do, two, it's also a tax issue comes into play. You know, one lot versus two lots.
I would think you would want, I mean, they're all over the world.
I mean, the, the physical characteristics of the lot may be such that you can't effectively subdivide it.
You can put the two buildings there, you can subdivide. You can get a ZBA, you can do a.
But you, 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 you might need a setback variance in order to do that.
Okay. Okay, we can eliminate all the zoning, too, if you want, but.
No, that's when you move to another town.
That's not where we're going, Kurt.
Well, I'm saying that's why you go to the ZBA, if it's, you can't fit what you want on your lot, you go to the ZBA and hope, and try there.
Ed, I didn't hear what you said.
I mean, this really comes down to do, allow like an apartment.
Um.
Leaving it in, you do not allow them.
No, so, no, cause it's, it's tru- it's the one building.
No, complex, it's multiple.
Okay, complex, yeah, complex, okay. Um, yeah, we don't have for, uh, PUDs or PURDs in our ordinance, allow that. I mean, that is something that we can look at.
That's the question on the table, do you want to? An apartment complex.
I mean, Lebanon, in other towns, really, as I was looking at that, it's one, they call PURDs. Uh, for residential versus residential. Yeah, this ones up by the, uh, middle school and grade and then. Kind of, uh, cemetery hill road or something or other, there's several in town, in Lebanon. Multiple structures on one lots.
Mm-hmm.
That's a whole different concept.
Well, is that a concept that we?
Uh, this, this doesn't go there, this just eliminates, it doesn't, it just eliminates any set regulations. For doing that type of, um. Thing if you delete principal building requirements.
But, what else coming, what, what, like, like plan stuff coming to play on something like that?
Just, just setbacks, yeah, just your setbacks.
It would, but there needs to be some kind of standards that could fall back on, it's like.
Yeah, and setbacks don't really come from property lines.
It comes down to whether we want to. Apartment complexes or not in this town.
I mean, so that's something that's.
We strike it, we'll get apartment complexes, probably.
Yeah, multiple houses on one lot.
On one lot.
I think that's.
There's already language in there that requires for multi-family, which is three units and up, has to have site plan. You do have a crack at the apple for anything more than single family or duplex.
But that's all in one structure. This is allowing two or more.
Two multifamily.
Yeah, structures, yeah.
Yeah.
Buildings, separate standalone buildings.
I mean, if, if we. Propose this to the townspeople. They're gonna be the ultimate deciders, not us.
Yeah, but they're gonna follow our lead. They're not gonna think through like we are right now, spending thirty, forty minutes on this one lot.
We, we have, we have to have hearings and we have to have a concise summary or explanation. And, you know, it, it's clear from the way this discussion has narrowed down. It boils down to, do we want apartment complexes? Or do we wanna prohibit apartment complexes?
It doesn't have to be, though, like, it doesn't have to be apartments, it could be two single family homes on one lot.
I suppose it could be.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing in there about multi-family.
Got a comment, Dan?
Did Dan say something?
No, all I said, all I said was, it, I'm trying to figure out if there's anything wrong with that. If it meets the setbacks. It's in the, it's in the R one district.
Does, does it conflict somewhat with the ADU or provisions?
I don't think so, because we're talking about. We, we don't have a size limit. We don't have the eight hundred square feet limit.
Okay, say I've got a one acre lot. Got a single family home on it, and, uh. I decide I, I, I wanna put up, uh, three other homes on that lot. So, I've got more than one principal building, but we're gonna strike that clause so that no longer applies.
You probably can't do it because it's setbacks, but other than that.
Well.
Well, it's like a what size building?
I can do it, I think it's going in.
Yeah, they may, they may be there a thousand square feet, so they're small homes, I, I don't know, but you, the point is. I could do that in lieu of trying to keep the ADU.
If you could.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay, so just. I think we just need to understand what, what it is we're proposing. That's what you wanna do, then there we go, but then you kinda wonder, wh- what do we need the ADU on this? Well, we need that because, uh, a lot may be, I may have, I've got a third of an acre lot.
Right.
Where I live.
Right, right.
In my garage, I could put, I can have a garage, if I had one, I could put an ADU over it.
Mm-hmm.
Still need the ADU.
There, um, at least with the ADU is like a restriction on septic systems.
Yes.
How many, so either, if you have a one acre lot, you're trying to put two separate houses on it. They would either have to have a really large septic system, which I would imagine is unlikely on a lot that size. Or if there's separate buildings, they should have to have separate septic systems.
Or they'd be on town sewer.
Town sewer, yeah.
Town sewer.
So it, it's conceivable that you could have two. Single family houses on. A lot, uh, with town sewer.
Yeah, but unlikely otherwise, probably.
Very unlikely because of the need to have septic system.
And the lot would have to be big enough to get all the setbacks in, you have to have thirty feet between them.
If it's big enough, how would it really be different?
Thirty feet's only for lot lines. On the same lot. There is no setback requirements for two, for you to strike.
That's right.
You're right.
Right.
You build the two houses right next to each other.
Right next to each other, you have a walkway in between them.
What do you, what were you, what was the point you were gonna make?
Uh, my point was just, if you, if you're trying to build two houses and have enough, um, like if it was outside of town. Sewer, and you, you need to have enough room for the appropriate septic system, it's probably gonna be. Larger than one acre, and so, if it was like a two acre lot, how would it be any different having two houses on a two acre lot? Than two one acre lots that are right next to each other?
I don't think there's any difference.
Yeah.
Not from, not from the stamp, driving down the road, but from a tax purposes, it's taxed for a lot. So. That comes into play.
If what you're trying to do is prevent people from having two single family homes on one lot. Could say something like, no lot shall have more than one principal building, except for multi-family.
But that's.
And that would allow you to have more than one building for multi-family, uh, for duplex and single family. So, that's what I'm trying to get to, seems like you guys wanna prevent people from having two single family homes detached. Just basically.
Yeah.
It's torn in half.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't say that. Personally, I see a problem with that, because I don't understand the implications of that. I think that's. Big problem I have with the whole approach here is that. This is, seems to be a little more complicated than kind of a visual thought. Perhaps it's something we should hang on to, as we get through the. Professional zoning work just rerun. Things are so intertwined.
I mean, it, in the case of a hypothetical development. They could always ask for a variance and not have to follow paragraph U, correct?
Right.
So. It's kinda kicking the can down the road a little bit. We do nothing. But maybe that's the best thing to do. Because we do have to get this thing before a public hearing. Uh, what is it, like, between Christmas and New Year, is that our tentative date?
In the January.
Well, the first one has to be late December, so that if there are any changes. We can have the second one in early January, still meet the deadline for the warning, is that right?
Grab, I've got the calendar, but last year, I think we had our first and only here, fifth, January twelfth, maybe?
Say, though, I would like to see this go through, I think we're getting into the same spot on this one particular section. Being it is something. Do I like the quarter acre zoning one?
See, we. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, um. I forgot what I was gonna say.
Fix this, though, to comply with state law. State law a- already allows one ADU per lot.
Right.
They mandate that you have a.
That's, that's dwelling, then, a lot.
It, it is.
And we say, we, you can only have one.
But the, the state trumps any existing ordinance that we have.
I agree with you, though, you might wanna take out the one dwelling, you might park.
One principal building, and then take out the one dwelling, because then we comply with state law.
Yeah.
That seems safe.
Yeah.
Without.
Yeah.
Creating a huge problem.
Question, and then what we're doing with the zoning, I mean, um, planner, you know, bring his question up.
Right.
You know, what are the, what are the repercussions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thursday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three is the last day to hold the first public hearing on adoption. Or amendment of zoning ordinance, historic district, building code, second public hearing is anticipated. There's your, we, we have until Saturday, December thirty-first to publish notice for the first hearing.
Go somewhere.
So that buys us another two weeks, but I don't see us solving these problems in one more two hour. Board meeting here.
I think this is fair.
Okay, what?
I think that's fair.
Okay.
But we're okay with, uh, tracking just. No lot shall have more than one principal building. Strike dwelling.
No, if we read, no lot shall have more than one principal building.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're in agreement on that.
Right.
Mm-hmm. And we're not gonna do anything with the density, are we in agreement on that?
You can ready, pass that motion, unless you're.
Yeah, that one's good.
That one can.
That one's good.
Oh.
That'll go forward. It's great.
Okay, yeah, I'll, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's passed.
I'm sorry, I got confused.
We're not talking about.
Okay.
You do need, you do need to have the final wording of the increased density. As it appears in the work here.
Mm-hmm. Right, and we can do that at our next meeting. Which will be.
What, December?
Fourteenth of December, yeah.
Yeah.
Which get, which gives us one more meeting after that, just in case we need it. So I think we're good, that's the schedule, Kurt?
Yeah, I just got one thing I'd like to add on the zoning, to throw out there, and this place on the non-conforming lots section. Um, two thirteen. This place on the nonconforming lots section, um, two thirteen, paragraph three. I just wanna add a sentence to that. And. So maybe I like to add the sentence that reads. Um, any any buildings or structures requiring requiring a new site plan review shall be in conformity with the provisions of this ordinance. And it's. Can we read that again?
Okay.
Um, any buildings or structures requiring a new site and review shall be in conformity with the provisions of this ordinance. Um, essentially the zoning ordinance as a whole.
I'll bet you that would be struck down by the court because we're creating a class of. Buildings or structures. That. Do not follow. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, this is in the nonconforming section.
Yeah.
You have a nonconforming use in a preexisting building. Comes in that that business or whatever it was. Is gone away, someone comes in with a new site plan to do something, a new use, new use or a new. Rearrange the building. And require a site plan review. They can no longer carry over something that was grandfathered from the previous. Time to the new.
Side?
Yeah.
I I think that's, I think that's a given, isn't it?
No, it's not. Not the way this is worded, there's nothing in there, but the way you can read this.
Right.
It's worded in such a way that it's not a given, it's not a given, right, but that use, that is not a given the way this it's currently written.
Well, what about, I have a a building, let's say it was an auto garage in the middle of a residential section. Own use. Lot is conforming otherwise. And I abandoned it. Okay, uh, now I wanna make it into a. Potential structure, ADU.
Well, it's. If it's permitted use, but it's. It's what's, say you have an auto garage and a side business. But you're only gonna make the AD, your auto garage, the ADU, but wanna keep the side business, which is also nonconforming, but also on the same lot. That's.
Kurt, I thought, I thought the parking was simple enough.
No, I'm saying if 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 somebody comes in with a site plan review. It's from the, it starts from the bottom, scratch, you can no longer carry over. Something that doesn't conform with the current zoning. It's a nonconforming permitted use because it was pre-zoned.
Right.
So, so when that. When a site plan review happens. That no longer. Gets grandfathered forward.
I think that's, I think, I think that's. A given, like the sky is blue.
But it's not, though.
Why is it not?
Because.
Can I just say we're not gonna resolve this one tonight?
Right.
Okay, well, think about it.
We're not.
We'll think about it.
Because it's not in the regs that says that's required.
But we can add this to our ongoing list of things.
Give me a, give me a couple of weeks to think about that.
Yeah, I think in the case of that sign too, that it's not, it's not the use, it's the structure.
Okay, uh, well, it's uh, buildings are.
To be flashing.
Any buildings or something, but it, but that lot required a new site plan review.
Yeah.
So that was on that lot.
Yeah.
I've talked to them, and they're gonna take it out, I've got Ursula and.
But there's other things like, you know, lights that are nonconforming to our current zoning regs.
Right.
Um.
That's that's where we have them bring it up to con up to current standards.
But it doesn't say they have to, if they're, if they're keeping the same building, but changing the inside. If their exterior lights that are nonconforming to our current zoning. But they're only changing the inside for the site plan review.
We we would tell them that.
It hasn't been done.
That in that in the site plan review, we are gonna bring you up to current standards.
But it's not, but it's not in the regs, if that's.
But it's on his list, the site plan review.
I'm not sure it goes down the checklist.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Goes down a checklist, and he.
You know, there.
But he says, well, we're just leaving the lights as is.
You can't. Be 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 because you go down the checklist on criteria that you review a site plan under. And you get to the point where it says exterior lighting must comply with whatever the zoning reg is, which says LED. Dark sky, downlight, not more than so many lumens, or whatever it says, and you say, this is our current standard. Please make the change.
My argument is, I'm not, I'm not changing anything on the outside, I'm only changing what's inside the building for others.
Then why would you need a site plan review?
Because I'm going from a one use to a different use.
Okay, so.
But just the internal.
Site means the entire place.
It doesn't get breached between internal versus external, does it?
No, site means.
I'm just.
Site means the whole place.
That's meant it's.
It means the whole lot.
And it's.
Can we stop this now?
Good idea, let's, let's have this discussion later. Um, like at our next meeting, um. Okay, master planning task for Rob, Kate tells me that if you change my status from guest to something else, I can.
No, you have to, you have, you have to be logged in from within the organization. So we all have organizational accounts. You could get your very own account.
Cause let me tell you. Zooming this meeting. The meeting is at one quarter of the screen, half the screen is David and the other quarter is Kate.
But you can't see me.
No, I can't see you, but you're a quarter of the screen saying Catherine Stewart with a emoji body there and David's half the screen. With just a David guest and a body.
Okay, look, let's, let's, let's forget the idea of using technology.
Okay.
Because it doesn't work.
What about that?
Um, so master plan update. We have had, uh, as of noon today, something in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirteen. Discrete hits on the Enfield Leaps website for people who looked at and or downloaded the draft. I think a hundred and thirteen is a real good number, it seems to me to be consistent with the um.
Survey.
The the surveys and and the number of people that have participated in the process. Um. We've gotten information or edits back from our proofreaders, Kurt did maps, and we had three people check it for grammar and spelling. Uh, those are being incorporated into upcoming drafts. I had hoped to be able to share screen and show you a preview of the interactive mode, it's pretty cool. Uh, there are little mouseovers where you can click to get captions on pictures. Um, the pages turn like a magazine. And there will be, I I I did, this just came out. I think this morning, or maybe it was late yesterday, uh, so I really haven't had a chance to look at it, but. This is where we start with the interactive part, where you can click on something and it'll take you to. The supporting data at a different section of the plan. And um. It's gonna, I think it's gonna be really a useful tool, uh, the feedback that Lindsay and I have had so far. Has been very positive. And we're having our. Did we get it right, public meeting, right here, Sunday afternoon, between two and four. Um, it would be great if planning board members could attend. We're doing, not watching uh a non-Pats football game because the Pats aren't playing. Um, and I'm. I'm hoping that we'll get a good fifty people ran them into this room. So that's, that's about it for uh master plan update, we're at the home stretch and. I hope that we're not gonna get a lot of major pushback on anything that we've done from the public meeting. And then we'll go on to. Continue to tweak it, bring it to the planning board. And if the planning board has no further changes. We'll do the public hearing. Hopefully between Christmas and New Year. Yes, excuse me, if it extends to twenty twenty-three, so be it. Uh, any questions on master plan?
One question about the online format, um.
About what?
The online format.
Yeah.
For the, for the plan, do we know, I assume it has like ADA um compliance, like for people who might be screen readers. No.
Um, I don't know what those requirements are, if they exist. Uh. They do. Ed, you and I can talk tomorrow and you can fill me in, I hope.
A little bit, but I bet they do, I would talk to Brandy first, she can probably just tell you that another does.
Okay.
It's based on the website design.
Okay, I will, I will ask her tomorrow. Um. Any other things on master plan? Any old business?
Yeah, hold on a minute, cause it was brought up before, um. Anybody get a chance to figure out how to do the building height for? Uh, the measurements? Or is in the zoning, where you take your measurements for the thirty-five foot height limits? Anywhere in the, well, to where, from the ground to what?
To the top of the building.
What is that, is that what you wanna say?
We were gonna, we were gonna have to.
The natural gap.
Yeah, I I'm gonna suggest that that falls under zoning changes, which we've already covered. Because that could be a two hour discussion in another.
No, I was, but someone, someone's gonna talk to the building inspector and the fire chief and see what they.
Yes.
Recommend. We just need a, where they recommend you measure from the ground to what on the structure.
It's, I think it's a combination of things, I think there's the soft and the peak of the roof.
Okay, well, the common zone regs say the side of the building facing the street, which is too generic. There's not a lot of buildings, don't face, well, you know, some part of it always faces a street somewhere, but it may not be what they want.
But it says that's.
Yeah, and I'm saying that's, is that a good place to, is that a good place to?
That would be a discussion if the planning board, that wouldn't we trust to ask the building inspector, because he has to measure from the side.
Right, but my point is, if the building. If the fire department prefers to go from a differentiation. You know, a specific place on the structure versus a which way the thing is facing.
I think it's a bigger discussion because the fire chief isn't. He doesn't. Really care about the third.
You don't have a lot of.
He doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't have a building he limits?
I think that's a bigger zoning discussion.
Okay, okay, I always assumed, understood it was a fire department we required.
Previous fire department, absolutely. Now, he's, uh, with modern technology, with sprinklers and mechanical ventilation and fire suppression and.
Right, but that's.
Materials.
But it's not all fire, though, for the height. You know, it's blocking others, it's lighting.
Right, right, there's other issues that come into play when you don't, yeah, unless I'm unlimited building height.
Not as big as initially.
As Ed suggests, this is another discussion for rewriting the zoning.
Yes.
It is after nine, and I think a lot of people.
Okay.
And Kate would like to wrap this up.
And I'm on vacation.
Ed's on vacation, so he's charging us triple time.
So tired.
Um. New business, budgeting for more master plan chapters, uh. My suggestion is that we budget five thousand a chapter, or twenty-five thousand dollars. To hire a consultant, and if we can get some grant money to reduce that, all the better. But budget time is coming up. And we have to have something in there.
Submit that in, right?
What?
Can you submit that to me in writing?
I'll be very happy to.
I'll support, I'll support that.
Okay.
Yep, you're supported.
Kate, are you abstaining from this discussion? Okay. Um.
I have to refuse, I'm on the budget committee.
Okay. Um.
You need a vote on that?
Do we need a vote?
I would recommend.
I will reauthorize twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made to re to request.
Request twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget for future chapters of the master plan.
Friendly amendment to be reduced by any grant monies obtained. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Extensions.
I'm abstaining.
All right. Motion passes. Five thousand a chapter. Next meeting, December fourteenth.
Hang on.
What?
Are we not, do we not wanna have a quest for funds to uh rewrite the zoning?
We do, but Rob, I think, is pretty confident that that's gonna be covered by a grant.
A platform grant. New Hampshire Housing is offering. Grants on a rolling basis.
Apparently they're rolling in bucks. Um.
Cover the whole thing, we have a matching funds or anything.
Up to a hundred thousand is the.
It's not free, we pay for it somewhere.
It's federal money.
Yeah, we pay for it.
It's fine too.
Listen, you're paying back your taxes you gave them, okay?
Um. Rob, any idea how much you're going to be requesting grant money?
Not yet, but we, there's pre-approved contractors on that, and we could actually ask for some estimates.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So.
Including Brain, Brain is a pre-approved contractor.
He is.
Yeah.
So next meeting, December fourteen.
And next Sunday.
And Sunday. Which, if we have a quorum, I guess will be an official meeting. Kurt?
Just on the new business, we, I mean, I just did it up tonight, um, review is really more for you and Rob, but it's. Something I always felt we were lacking, um, is just a sort of like a bullet point of when we have public hearings. Um, going through and the wording, and one of the real, one of the sort of changes that affects everybody is that when we. Accept a, an application, how it's, the process is worded. Um, basically, it's, you know, in the past, it was like, we were asked, Rob, if the application is, application is complete, he says yes, and then we just go forward. Where I believe it's really a board's vote to accept the application, cause that starts the clock ticking for how many days we have to approve. So it's, and then if the board has any concerns or questions, that they can be asked to be raised at that time. But the question needs to be asked. Does the board, does the board approve any concerns or questions, and then the rest is just sort of like a bullet point, and it's. Some work for us, but also for the general public when they're here and they don't understand what the process is. Of how it goes forward, cause they're usually first time, cause they're in a butter. Type of thing, so I think I don't give everybody about a copy, uh.
So you can like a handout and.
Actually, Kurt, while you were on vacation, traveling, um, for. A lot of the meetings, I did start to explain the process to applicants and people. A lot of the meetings, I did start to explain the process to applicants and people.
Yeah.
The audience, because people had, uh, mentioned that. They would appreciate that, so.
Yeah.
I have, I have started that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think I, I think I hated that with.
Right, I mean, just something that's, you can either put up or.
You passed it out, sure, I gave it to you, could pass that?
No, I just took the.
He's got it?
Yeah, yes.
I tell you, you've got it and I don't.
Look at how many copies you have. Can I have a copy?
Yeah, well.
You have any more than one copy right there?
I picked it up off the table.
Oh, okay.
I thought, I thought you passed them out.
Uh I was only passing out, um.
It was in the stack of stuff.
Agendas, or not agendas, I was passing out minutes.
Yeah, it's alright, it was something like.
No, I have not.
Make sure all these things that could be amended to this, so.
Um, was it?
Well.
Yes.
Oh, there are many. So I was. I think I have to go to bed before I get grumpy. And was a ninety-year-old.
Fine for a moment.
I suggest we arrange it.
Yeah.
Next week.
Accepting an.
Some other sign.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I move with your.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed.
Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned at nine thirteen. To our guests, thank you for coming, we hope you enjoyed the show.
That's how the sausage gets made.
So what committee would you like to be on?
Yes.
It's my favorite. We have openings, there's budget and there's conservation.